Call to meeting in order of the Board of Education. Call to order of the meeting of the Board of Education, Mrs. Tuckerson. Please call.
Mr. Secretary, Mr. Ericson.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Hamlin.
Here.
Mr. Anderson. Mr. Roman.
Here.
I'll keep an eye on that.
Here. Mr. Bennison, please leave us in place. Please.
Let's just do the flag of the United States of America, and the Republican for which it stands. A nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as strong.
Okay, first we have communications with the old school. Mr. Bennison.
Good evening, thank you for letting us host the board meeting this evening. We're excited to have you here. I have three of my teachers here tonight to do a presentation for you. So, Ryan Malu, Susan Warnke, and Leila Kraszewski. They teach seventh and eighth grade social studies. And they're gonna talk to you guys about the PLC process and how they use assessments and data to individualize instruction for students and just the PLC process in general. They're three excellent teachers and they... Some people say, you know, Susan and Ryan have worked together for over a decade. But when Leila joined the staff, she interacts with the other two teachers really well. The PLC process didn't change. So, you know, they're a great example of when you have an excellent structure and you're going to collaborate and share and trust each other, great things can happen for kids. So, without further ado, I have three wonderful social studies teachers.
I'm Ryan Malu. We don't have to use a mic, do we?
Yeah. Good evening. I'm Ryan Malu.
Hi, I'm Leila Kraszewski.
And I'm Susan Warnke.
What we're gonna talk about a little bit is how we PLC together, how we use to drive our instruction day by day and unit by unit. And Susan and I have talked together for about 15 years. And like Mr. Bennison just said, Leila has joined our PLC in seventh and eighth grade. We are in the working on our staff and trying to stay, it doesn't matter how long, that you work together, as long as you have any kind of goal and you're willing to work together. It's not all about what we say, it's not about would you always contribute to your PLC? Because everybody here at Franklinville is willing to contribute great things. But sometimes it's what you're willing to give up and work with others to make your PLC functional and to be willing to take risks and try everything in your classroom. And then we see how it goes and it was kind of data to drive the vision for our destruction. Okay? We always like to say our PLC is a work in progress. I would say now any given day, we're communicating with each other three, four times a day within passing periods at our PLC time, whether before or after school, letting each other know how our lessons are going. We usually design our tests first using understanding by design. And then once we get our tests made, we come up with common learning targets. So, if you're walking in one of our classes and maybe you get data, our learning targets will be very similar, if not exactly the same. And then our learning targets will be the same, but that also helps give us autonomy in the class because by having the same learning targets, we won't have to have the same exact lesson per se. We can teach through our strengths as a teacher. Then additionally, we will have the same component and common assessments at the end so that we can compare how our lessons work and also how our learning targets work based on the daily assessment of my lessons. On the storm, I'm gonna talk to Susan and we're gonna do our lessons day by day, unit by unit, based on daily activity from the kids. And trying to teach through our strengths, not having everything be exactly identical to the time in the class.
So, we did talk a little bit about using common in our classroom. We designed our lessons together, but I think that Ellen recorded that common assessment at the end, unformed assessments. But if you walk into our rooms, you might be teaching in a completely different way than us doing it. So, I might use that a group activity where he could choose to give a lecture or a lecture or a small group activity, he's doing something else. So, we're constantly switching up what we're doing, but then going to each other and saying, "How would you teach this, did your things get better than these?" But the next time we do it, we do it better together. These are all details and our ideas, but we went right.
Also, at the beginning of the test together, and for our students who are taking the test, we use the test to analyze the data and think about things like was a test fair? So, we look at things like, "This was the hardest question for students, this was the easiest question for students." We also consider how we taught the students. So, for example, eighth grade, Ryan and I are currently doing unit of group correction. And we're both teaching the stock market a little differently. So, a couple of weeks later, we have our assessment, we'll look at the common question on the stock market, and then we kind of compare and see which way of teaching the stock that students understand understood better. And use that data to, you know, for management. We also use assessment data to think about ultimate tests. So, we have students that might need to do more challenge. Instead of having to take the multiple choice test, we might have given them an S and S. If we have a student who might need a little bit more help, we have ultimate tests for them too. Looking at a test after we did it, we're able to make changes to the test so we can then use them for the following year. So, not only thinking about how we can use tests for this year, but also for the future. And when we look at our test data, things that we look at would be the average score. So, what was the average score of all students that took the common assessment? How many A's, how many what's the eight percent, how we need to use in apps? And also, what was the hardest question and what was the easiest question?
So, what we're looking at is the scanner machine, it's this data analysis sheet that shows whether you went on correctly or you don't understand it. And it shows you how many had missed a certain question. This is our economics test, and you can't see it, but I think it was in number 26. I think I had 47 business questions. I went over to Ryan and I said, "How many people missed that question for you?" He had less. So, we had a really friendly conversation about how I taught my material compared to the way he taught materials, that we can better, I can better my lessons, better my share. So, the data analysis sheet helps us a lot with multiple choice tests. Of course, we can do that when you do it like that today, but we're able to break it down by unit and stuff in the morning.
In eighth grade, we started this last year, so this is the second year that I'm trying this, where we have students do their assessments using a Google form. So, the test is done on a computer. And this has been beneficial as well of assessments. Some standards that some of the new computer-based assessments, it gives students some practice. And with Google Form, after students have taken the test, you get a chart like this one to show the averages. So, exam data is pretty good and beneficial. You can see where students fell, where they're outliers compared to how much students did on the test. And it also breaks, Google Forms breaks down each question. So, this question is about, "Will we have a revenue monopoly?" So, we can tell from this question that our students really understood this when we happened earlier. If the data on this question had it differently, then it might have been on, "Okay, they didn't understand this, so we have to remember." So, how can we change the way that we taught it to help them understand that?
And then the last step, we take all our data that allows us to modify our test as a way to help English learners, English learner students and Bible forward English students to meet their needs. And then we also are able to use our quiz data to see throughout Google Form that the kids are mastering the entire unit. We might have some freedom to swap kids into one of our classrooms where, for Mrs. Haye, who wrote himself for our units on World War I, we had kids swap classrooms for the same unit. And I went and debated my class, where kids are receiving all the form assessments and wanting to do more of a high school level exam, which we called it, off our eight graders. She ranked almost a credit center. Our goal was not as much competition based. And then we had the same basically questions along the way for the students. But then how we presented what they were going with the format, we swapped kids for a few days, they were checking with us, and we fully flop back, and it's over, and go to the next unit. Perhaps with the same format, if we ever needed support, we'd go home as a teacher and we'd have swapped kids with the same classrooms. Change the highest, or the lowest, and then again, still have our common assessment, which would be usually about 45 out of 50 questions identical. So, we'd have those, include the questions we'd be, sort of, whatever in the classroom we had questions, example lessons, and the development of students. So, what we see, anyways, we love counseling, we don't see, this is middle school, middle school testing, because we constantly go back and forth, scrap the lessons in the middle grade, day by day afternoon. And that, what we're doing is they call video, we call it video common assessments, and that's why we're doing it to assess the kids on the change. And everybody is supporting what we're doing. That's great. So, this is what we're taking questions, I guess. I don't think there were any questions, but thank you for the feedback, I guess, for the members asking questions.
I just have a comment. Faith, you've got it. This is your one from Mark. I can remember...
I didn't script it at all.
I remember eight years ago, when this concept was in the news, was to start, this was a vision I think you all had. And this is just a question. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I'm always reminded when Mr. Roman finished this section that I'm sure you have lots of interest in our very exciting agenda, agenda tonight for the staff who are here. But feel free to go back home with your families and partake in holiday preparations, etc. But you're also welcome to stay if you'd like. So, some of the people in the audience who come to our meetings regularly might notice a change at the front of the table tonight. As you recall, Mr. Roman announced at the last meeting that he was gonna step down as president of the board, and then by policy, I would move up as president. And I'm excited to take this position and kind of carry the torch forward. And one of the things that I've reflected on, what's ahead of us and all the work that we've done, is it's pretty wonderful to get to spend the next few hours trying to make great decisions for kids. And I think some of the new things on the agenda over the next, later on in the agendas are kind of reflective of that focus. And is, one of the things that I thought I would kind of start this portion of the meeting with is kind of a reflection on our mission, which is kind of hidden back on that banner up there that you might get a chance to look at. But, you know, as we make great decisions for kids, it's consistent with our mission to inspire, educate, challenge, and support all students to reach their highest level of learning and personal development. That's really what we try to do with all the decisions and agenda items and kind of things that we discuss and research, which is all up here towards that mission for the students of District Two. So, with that, I'll ask for if they have any modifications requested for the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none. Any public comments?
No.
Excellent. My first meeting, I don't have to read that. So, next on the agenda is Super Touch Report, that's for sure.
Thank you. So, actually, Erica's gonna come up to the podium in just a second to invite the board to a very special event coming up that connects directly back to your last meeting. Just as she's coming up, one of the things that I wanted to mention, because I think what was just shared with you from the teachers at Franklin, phenomenal example just got, I think it was probably a couple of weeks ago, Chris happened to tag and send to Faith and I an article from Education Week that kind of projected into the year 2019 and what are the trends that are gonna impact education and the work of administrators and those that are running our schools. And, you know, an interesting reflection in that article is that without any planning, it truly reflected a lot of what's already on, our agenda, the board's agenda, work that's in progress. But one of those things continues to be this idea of collective teacher advocacy. And so, how teachers work together through that PLC process to regularly better each other's work and their work together, you know, effectively, that is the PLC process. And so, I think sometimes when we circle back to items, when we review with the board coming up, your PLC survey after the first of the year, and some board members may be inclined to say, "Gosh, haven't we done this already for a while?" It is for us, I think, an ongoing commitment that we make to continue to improve our craft. I don't think PLC work is gonna go away anytime soon, nor should it go kind of off of our radar. So, thank you to the Franklin staff for, I think, highlighting that important work. So, that said, Erica Fuschers.
Okay, there we go. You have in front of you an exciting invitation to our groundbreaking event on January 15th at 2:45 PM. We will break ground on a new Jefferson Early Childhood Center. We will start with a short program in the gym. We anticipate that it'll still be cold outside, so we'll have the longer portion of our event in the gym. We'll have some comments. There's a group of Jefferson students that are very, very eager to lead us in the pledge. They've asked about it multiple times, and so they're excited to do that. We will, we are planning to incorporate students into the program. They will join us for that as well. We have some surprises in store too, some opportunities for community member involvement. We're getting some little river rocks that all of the students at Jefferson will decorate. And community members and board members will still have an opportunity to decorate a commemorative rock. And then those rocks will be incorporated, they will be placed under the foundation of the school. And so, we thought that that was very ceremonious, but also, the students that are currently at Jefferson will not be able to enjoy the new building. And so, we thought that this was a great way for them to still participate in the new building and be a part of that as well. So, that should be an exciting opportunity. We will then go outside after our program, and we will shovel a little dirt. And community members, after the ceremonial groundbreaking, will have an opportunity to shovel some dirt too. This event is open to anyone in the community to attend, and we are looking forward to it. So, if you have any questions, if you need additional invitations, please let us know and we will get those for you.
Yeah, I think Pammy Ann's question is, it's not gonna be frozen dirt as of January. We're gonna bring a little bit of dirt in to help you with that digging process in January. But board members, if you would not mind, I would ask if you could just let me know if you are able to attend that evening. So, we're gonna be setting up kind of that first dig of the dirt, and then, of course, we want to make sure that all board members are a part of that. We've also invited our open areas, all of our municipalities to be a part of that. Executive Director from the Park District, as well as a few other specially invited guests to be a part of that first shovel of dirt that we go. So, please let us know if you can do that. Couple of other things, just really quickly, I wanted to share with the board. I had an exciting opportunity this week. Students at Longfellow Elementary School were celebrating the birthday of the state of Illinois. And so, third graders had some really neat presentations that they did. They presented to the community. Dr. Slugg and I had an opportunity to pay a quick visit to the Longfellow here, some of the student work, and just a nice opportunity for the community to come in and engage. So, thank you to the Longfellow staff for that. Board members, in your packet, it should be the first thing in your green folder, you have a document from PMA that provides for you the summary of the closing of the sale of the lease certificates. And just an important thing that I wanted to share with the board, when we were projecting, what we anticipated that those lease certificates would sell for, we were projecting a 3.85% interest rate. They went out to competitive sale this week. The interest rate that we got was actually 3.7. So, your annual lease payment on the new early learning center that we had projected during the referendum, that $1 million, will actually be $950,000 a year. So, you are definitely seeing some savings in that. And we did hit the market, the municipal bond market had a good time with the sale of those lease certificates. Also, just worth noting that our delay plus credit rating was affirmed before that sale. And so, again, that certainly helped to make sure that you got a really competitive rate on that. So, congratulations to everybody on that. In your green folder as well, one of the other things that Diana has provided for you that I can't put my hands on right this second, but is a summary of the donations that the board has received over the first, I got it, over the first six, the last six months of the year. So, from August to December, we accept donations at every board meeting from PTAs, Student Excellence Foundation, generous community members that support our schools in a way that's amazing. In total, for the last six months of the year, we've accepted $180,000 worth of donation to the school districts that very, very much support both our program and the mission that President Paulson highlighted a little bit earlier tonight. So, I want to take a moment to recognize that. Did want to mention to the board, one of the items on the agenda for this evening is the acceptance of the audit. As we've projected to the board in the past, there's been a delay across the state in the delivery of audits this year. The delay has nothing to do with the numbers that we've been able to provide or the audit work that the ours have done in-house. It has to do with a state-level report that was issued at one time and then had to be recalled, reconfigured, and unfortunately, is still on delay right now. And so, we have not actually received from the auditors that report. So, when we come to that agenda item tonight, the recommendation is gonna be that we table that item until January. Obviously, we can't deliver to an audit report unless we actually have the audit report. But I do want to assure members of the board that the finance committee had an opportunity to really review what is the meat of the audit report, and that those are our own numbers. As soon as we can get that together, we're gonna obviously get that out to the board. But what it's gonna tell the board, at least in terms of your own fiscal control responsibility this year, you had a good fiscal year that we just closed out. So, we're actually excited to get that report to you so that you can affirm for the community that we did a very, very nice job of managing the community's resource and finance last year. But that's what's coming a little bit later. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention for the board and the community is that I think all of our buildings this week have released to parents and to students the reminder about the Five Essentials survey. So, Five Essentials is a statewide climate survey that analyzes feedback from students this year. The student feedback starts in grade four. In the past, that was only middle and high school students that participated. This year, fourth and fifth grade students participate as well and provide feedback on the instructional environment in each of their schools. It's also available to teachers at each of our school sites, and then it's available to parents at each of our school sites. There are required participation rates in order for us to get data through Five Essentials. That is a component on our accountability matrix this year, not the outcome of Five Essentials, but the fact that certainly on the student and the teacher side, that we hit the required participation rate. We've never had a problem in terms of participation rate from students and from teachers. But if we don't get enough parent involvement and engagement in Five Essentials, we don't get that really important data as well. And so, our buildings have been, have worked on a communication plan, have a series of communication reminders that are going out so that hopefully, we will get to the required participation rate and get that valuable feedback. As the board knows from when we looked at that last year, we identified some items within our own dashboard that we want to be able to use the Five Essentials data to help us affirm and reinforce. So, survey is open, we hope everybody's gonna participate in that across the district.
So, can we offer an opportunity, maybe at evening events at our schools, where we have some computers out and we can have our staff there directing parents to take some and that might be an opportunity to grab some people right then in there? And then I have a question. For our middle school and high school students, is it still they're going to do just one subject area or one teacher, or are they doing the entire day? Because I remember a flaw with the survey it was, and especially even for parents, when it asks you about your child's teacher, and you happen to be a middle school or a high school parent, it was very difficult to answer that. I think it had to say, "I'm gonna take a general answer," or "I'm gonna pick one subject area." And I was just curious what they were doing for the middle school and high school students.
Faith, you wanna answer the first question, because I saw you have another first one?
Sure. Julio sent out an email about two hours ago suggesting to parents that it'd be upcoming holiday events, concerts, all those consequences, to make that available and have some devices that you also can take it on your phone. So, yes, that piece is up.
To the second one, of course, I don't know that we've ever seen people in, at middle and high school on only one class, because the survey is not intended at the middle and high school level to be focused only on one teacher as much as the instructional environment. So, I think that's probably still a bit of a challenge within the survey, but candidly, one that I don't know that there's an easy resolve to. What I will say is that Five Essentials has been a research-supported survey that's been validated and shown to provide still useful and meaningful data in the way that it's currently constructed. But the instruction to teachers and they can redirect me if I'm wrong on this, we don't encourage them to only focus on one class that they're answering the survey on. Is that right?
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Should I? You can do the other.
Okay. So, that, because for the kids, there's questions specific to like charts and math about those common areas. So, you know, we do it all for like charts, we're doing their little assessments because they're all those, so we do, we have the, I'm pretty sure that's, everybody has a similar one. But I think that's the thing we could look at, you know, for, we're just gonna be, you know.
I took the middle school and high school test today or the survey, and it doesn't separate, it doesn't give me the opportunity to separate. It just says, "Does your student feature?"
Right. Exactly. That's my concern, it's asking for very... I wrote a letter to the University of Chicago, or I can't remember who did, I wrote several years ago, because it felt like, as a middle school parent, I was at, it was asking about my child's teacher, I had to generalize, I couldn't be specific. And so, I questioned that, I gave it up.
Yeah, well, I guess the only other thing I'll say about response is that it is intended to be a measure of school culture, not an evaluation of one individual teacher in classroom. And so, I think the only way that you can probably get a global generalization of culture is to ask the question where people are broadly, even though it's saying teacher, kind of generalizing that too, is my general sense that it's true or it's not true, because I think of teachers, but yeah, it's so challenging.
Just to review the buy sale, or not buy sale, the lease certificate, just to understand again, we have, our estimated total cost for this project is what number?
Fifteen, just to herald $15,000.
Okay. And of that, we are funding that, of this 13, 395, is that our proceed, or are there fees that come out of that, or is that the net number that you're saying?
That's the net number.
Okay. So, we're getting basically 13, 4 here, and we had funded a million and a half in the past, okay? Okay? So we're up to 14, 9. So that more or less covers the 15.
Yeah, and so the reason that slightly less than 13 and a half million dollars were sold is that as the proceeds from that lease certificate sale are deposited, they are going to earn some interest as they're being drawn down and used. And so we're calculating some of that interest earning into that overall project. So the balance of what you're missing there and probably a little over $100,000 is going to be an interest earnings as that's sitting with the bank.
I guess if you have a question, the 15 million is the nuts and bolts type of construction cost. Then on top of that, then we have other costs.
We have about a million and a half and, not a million and a half, a little over a million dollars in post-construction costs that will either be funded by district fund balance and/or fundraising.
Or our fundraising, okay. So that million is the key number there that will, I'm thinking as we walk toward this consumption of fund balance. I mean, that's where our exposure is about a million dollars. Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Schuler? Just one comment on the groundbreaking for Jefferson, the idea of students doing something with the rocks, painting the rocks and putting it in the foundation is awesome. I've never heard of that before. I'm going to part of that. I think it's pretty fantastic. Okay. Next item is the consent agenda. I thanked Dr. Schuler three times already for only five items on the consent agenda. So I'll read those five. Number one, acceptance of gift from Ecolab to Hawthorne Elementary School. Number two, approval of a resolution of a line item transfer within the transportation fund. Number three, approval of bills payable and payroll. Number four, approval of minutes. November 14, 2018, Golden enclosed. November 28, 2018, special meeting. And approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to July 2017 as allowed by law. And then number five, approval of personal reports to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence from administrative certified classified and non-union staff. Are there any items on the consent agenda the board members would like to be removed? Okay, Dr. Schuler, you have any information to add?
I have it.
Okay, does the board have any questions or comments on any items? If not, I'll ask for, do you have a question? I'll ask for a motion to, a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Roman, second by Mrs. Erickson. Mrs. Hutchison, somebody please call Roman.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Grantree?
Yes.
Mrs. Hambly?
Yes.
Mrs. Hambly?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes. Consent agenda has passed. Now we move to action items. And the first item is the election of Board of Education Officers. Right now, we have a vacant seat for the Vice President. And so I would like to ask for a nomination for the Vice President.
I nominate enthusiastically and confidently this is Chris Grantree to be the Vice President of the Board of Education.
Okay, are there any other nominations for Vice President? Okay, so we don't need a second. We just need to ask for a roll call vote on the nomination of Chris Grantree as Vice President.
Mr. Roman? Mrs. Grantree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hambly?
Yes.
Mr. Hambly?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes. All right, Chris is our new Vice President. She goes to see him here next week for a while. And now we got another vacancy of Secretary. For the past couple of years, Chris has served as our Secretary. Now we need to seek a nomination for one of the members to serve as Secretary of the Board of Education.
I'd like to nominate Rob Hamlin as the next Secretary. Is that the thing you're talking about? You're willing to do it, is that? Okay. Yeah, I will continue with my nomination then.
Okay, are there any other nominations for Secretary? Okay, we don't have another one. So we just move right to a roll call vote for Rob Hamlin as Secretary.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Grantree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Hambly?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Yes, all right. Congratulations. Great job. Look forward to at least the next couple of months. The next item on our action item list is the acceptance of the 27, 2018 financial audit. In light of Dr. Schuler's comments earlier that we don't have an audit to accept, I'm going to ask for a motion and a second to table that until our January meeting.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Hambly, second by Mr. Hamlin. Do we need to take a vote on that? Yes, okay. Mrs. Hutchison, somebody please take a vote.
Mr. Hambly?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Grantree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes. Okay, so that will be on the agenda in January. And then the third and final action item for tonight is the approval of the 2019, 20, and 2020, 21 school calendars. Dr. Schuler, you have any information to share?
I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Kyle. He's just going to give a couple of reminders to the board again as he's making his way up to the podium. I want to thank both Dr. Kyle, the members of the Calendar Committee, and everybody that I think took a thorough and very thoughtful approach to the development of the calendar. This is an item that we recognize is never going to be met with universal support and enthusiasm. There just are a lot of opinions about the way that a calendar looks, but we did make sure that we took, I think, a very, very careful approach to the development. So, Dr. Kyle?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Schuler. Thanks to members of the school board. I remember when you mentioned that I was going to be part of this, you all laughed. I think through the process, I kind of understood that. But one thing I can say is, kind of looking back at the work that we've done, is we really did bring in a lot of feedback from all parties. And people wanted to give us their opinion. We took it. So I got 20 emails, feedback overall. What I thought I'd do is generalize them into categories so you can kind of get a feel for what the community had. So there were four emails about moving the November incident two days to match a polling day for Pleasant Hill because Pleasant Hill is a polling place. I think many of you have seen emails about that this past year. There were three emails to keep the calendars the same as they've always been, have finals before break, and then after break have students work on lessons and units. There were five emails, I just got a new one yesterday, that do not like the 2021 calendar because it starts two days earlier. In all five emails, they expressed concerns over summer ending early, finals before winter break, and that could be stressful for kids. Concern over the heat in August, and also concern that semester one would be 10 days shorter in semester two. I also received two emails that did not like that winter break in the 2021, 2020 and 2021. Break is split midweek. Then we had three emails that were concerned about elementary school students going a full week as opposed to three days. There were two supportive emails that really liked our work, which was great to get. And then I got a letter just yesterday about any change in a calendar is tough on divorced families. So I wanted to share that feedback I got from the community with the board so that you're aware what we got. And overall, it was 20 emails and then one letter.
All right, questions or comments for the board members?
A couple of questions. Dr. Kyle, can you remind us about how we came to that survey?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that because I looked at that today before we, before I presented. I actually brought the survey. We had 2,738 respondents, about 100 more than two years ago when we did it in 2016.
And if I remember correctly, about 80% of the parents surveyed said they wanted the finals before.
Yes, 80% said they wanted the finals before. And out of the choices of how to get the finals before, really, they only liked the one about moving two days before. So we went, that was what started our process, is getting the data from the staff, parents, and teachers. And then we also surveyed the students, and we surveyed the high school teachers as well.
So our school year really is only starting two days prior? We're not starting two days prior only?
No, I think there's a misconception with a couple of emails. They think we're starting a whole week early. And the feedback from the first survey was very clear, nobody wants to start a week early. And I believe the committee would say nobody on the committee wanted to start a week early either.
Which is why we then chose to have the next year, to wait for the two years to be able to do that.
Yeah.
And then I know you said you mentioned the Calendar Committee. So is every grade level, every level at least represented on it?
Yes, every grade level. We even had a kindergarten representative. So we had every, not every grade level, but we had every level. So we had elementary, middle school, high school, and kindergarten. We also had administrators, high school, middle school, and elementary. So we had a good mix of support staff members as well. I think the two support staff members were at middle school. And we also, so we tried to make the committee as representing all the different levels. That was where the rich discussion came from because whenever you look at a calendar, there are three or four different lenses to look at.
And I think too, for the community's sake to understand, I know that in the four years, almost that I've been on the board, this has been a very active discussion that we had. We tried to move this way. I appreciate everybody taking our time and diligence and that to get there and that all of our staff and parents were represented and students. And so many students, and that was a fairly large number that wanted the survey.
Yeah, if I round up, 76% of the 10th, 11th, and 12th graders did want finals before break. And we asked that because of the data we got from the first survey. We thought, why not ask the students?
And then one last thing to tie it together for the rest of the board. Mrs. Erickson and I all serve on the Teaching and Learning Committee, and we have been talking final examinations for the past several years as well. And as finals are even beginning to change and what that looks like, I know that most of our English finals are cold reads, they're not studying finals, they're not getting to apply knowledge and learn right then and there. And so we're trying to be cognizant of that as well with finals meeting in December.
Yeah, part of the reason why we asked for that 18-month delay before we changed is because we do feel like we have some work to do at the high school and middle school level to balance out orders and semesters and the exams especially. If you have less days, you have to revisit those exams, and those aren't done overnight. So we will be looking at our assessments as well. I do believe with time, teachers will be able to make this a very successful change.
Any other comments or questions?
And Dr. Kyle, just for the record, we're not blazing trails here, are we, as a district?
If you use our new conference, the Duquesne Conference, we would be the last school to have finals before winter break. That's every school in our conference, which will be Geneva, Batavia, St. Charles is switched. And then April 2003, 2004, they're in a different conference, but they were in our old conference. And then Leinhard High School District as well has finals before in Lake Park. So all the schools in our Duquesne Conference, we are not the first. We're probably one of the late ones.
And most of these school districts have made that change by shifting up the start of school by a week, is that correct?
A week, yes. We did find a district that we compare ourselves to, Barrington. They have a 10-day imbalance. So that is one of the models that we looked at, the high school. And that somebody will also, they also have five days of elementary school. So that will be somewhere, I know the superintendent pretty well. We used to work together, so we're going to tap into how Barrington did that.
The one thing I've heard, I've made inquiries about this. I think that even though we may be joining those districts in the finals before, and I think there's a, I found there was a number of districts that had different Thanksgiving week programs. And that, you know, because we're giving up two or three days that way. And then, you know, that was the one item that I think we're different on. And it does trouble me a little bit because of that 10-day imbalance. So I, you know.
Every school district does it a little bit differently, but there were some pretty clear feedback on keep the Thanksgiving break the way it is, keep winter break the way it is. So we tried to use those as we navigated through the calendar.
I guess in summary, I'd like to, you know, as we move forward in this and we reevaluate our successes with it, you know, I think that's one that I would like to keep in mind as a possible change to, you know, be a little more flexible. I listen closely to the elementary statement about that first week coming back for the younger kids is really, you know, a full week is very challenging. So, you know, that, you know, we could change that in some respects if we get that in the base. And I recognize there's a lot of people that leave town anyway, you know. So, you know, I think that's part of the complication. But it is something that concerns me basically.
Does Jefferson and kindergarten start on a Tuesday, not on Monday?
Second day.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment, I appreciate what Dr. Kyle has done here. As a leader of a new member of our staff to navigate this minefield and come to this conclusion and recommendation, I think it's a very achievement. So thank you for that.
I'm still smiling. It was, I got to know a lot of people. It was a great experience. You guys really do a good job of getting a lot of input from all different parts of our, of our community. So thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Just two quick things for me. I think, one, I'd like to continue to keep up the pulse on some of the feedback from elementary schools. I had my teacher group dinner the other night. They, those two elementary teachers just expressed some concern about kids being in that full week, full five days, and how that's a little bit more difficult for that each group. So let's, we could kind of continue to have that part of our conversation. And then I think we, as board, recognized for our conversations last time that that planning that's going to go into two years out is going to be extensive. And so if there's some opportunities to bring back kind of a status report to the board and kind of let us know how it's going and how things are being adjusted, that would be helpful so that we, over the next couple of 18 months or so, have some comfort that the high schools are able to work through that with those unbalanced classes. Okay, now I need a motion and a second to approve the 2019, 2020, and the 2020, 21 school care over as presented.
So, so moved?
I'll second that.
All right, moved by Mrs. Crantry, seconded by Mr. DeMbi, and Mrs. Huches, who do please call for move?
Mrs. Crantry?
Yes.
Mr. DeMbi?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you again for all your work on that and the team. It's exciting. Next is, next is oral reports. We have three oral reports tonight. The two, first two really focused on the students. We started this at the last meeting, so just as a quick refresher for the board, we thought it would be nice to have a short, five-minute-ish kind of feature on social emotional learning as well as student learning features. And with the idea that we don't wanna ask a lot, additional prep time, research of our assistant superintendents are gonna be leading this effort. But just kind of a quick update on some of the great things that are going on in our district for kids.
Yeah, first of all, thank you for the opportunity. As I said last time, the opportunity to talk about social emotional learning at each of our board meetings, I consider it a privilege and a reference to like the great work that's happened in our schools. Just a little context, at our last board meeting, I reported on some of the work that was happening at our elementary schools specifically at Madison, how they were recognizing behaviors through a positive behavior intervention support approach. I'm gonna kind of turn the tide a little bit on this one and move to the high school level. And I'm gonna talk about drug prevention a little bit. And the reason I do that is I want to draw kind of the understanding that social emotional learning is a broad and large topic that ranges from how we teach behaviors, how we build relationships, how we build mindset, to how we have preventative practices as well. So, in that mindset, I, on November fifteenth, I had an opportunity to attend the Morville South. And as part of their drug prevention program that's required within the health classes, they actually bring in a guest speaker, well presenter, for Robert Crown, who's really an expert in this area. And I have to tell you, one, her presentation, she spoke to all the health classes that come through. So all the juniors received this, either here in the hall or in the room. Was engaging, focused really on the social and physiological risks. But it was also brought to our students in a decision-making, self-awareness sense as well. So our students were really, really engaged. We ignored much of the same work in their drug prevention pieces. They partnered with Robert Crown. And both of our schools partnered with Trinity House as well. So I bring this to light as well, Trinity House, the counseling service really for addiction. And they actually bring speakers to our high schools to speak to our students, former addicts that are above teenage or early twenties age, to really resonate with our kids. So why is this important to social emotional learning? This really falls in that emotional wellness strand that we're building within our social emotional learning framework. And it's that preventative education piece as well. And then lastly, again, it brings to light how we are partnering with communities when we look at our content resources, when we think about Robert Crown coming in and working with our kids, and when we think about our council services. So wanted to highlight the work that's happening at our high schools and also draw your attention to the broad framework of the broad work that is social emotional. So I'll take any questions now.
Hi, one, I'm a little concerned about, you know, the direction the state's going a little bit with Maryland. And, you know, it sounds like, you know, the new governor or governor-elect is thinking that as a good revenue source for the state of Maryland. And I'm curious of whether any of the programming you just did, I'm sure the age will be above eighteen and so on, but I think it sends a different kind of message if it's now a social-use drug, I guess. How, I'm curious, and I'm sure you're not gonna answer this right now, how we're gonna deal with that if this comes to play? And then, I'm curious of whether there was any addressing it in this current.
So there wasn't, question, answered your last question. There wasn't any addressing the kind of current political state or that, but I don't, we completely change the composition, the presentation, or the learning objectives provided. Because the real focus is on how does this affect your body? How does this affect your future, your decision-making skills? And one of the things that the presenters were very cognizant of is, I'm not gonna be able to follow you around your board. I want to educate you, right? I want you to kind of look at what happens to your body when you do this? What happens to your, to all of your abilities? How are you seeing it? So I think that has to continue to be our focus because we know kind of two things in this area. Preventative education is a preventative factor. And then, really, the expectations that our schools and our parents and families have for our kids around the drug piece is another preventative factor. So no, it was not addressed there. But two, I think the focus has to continue to be our psychological and social.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Anything?
Oral report number two is our student learning feature.
So the reason that I wanna talk to you about the reading frameworks, District 200 are twofold. One is the very backbone of our reading instruction for K through eight. And having our reading framework is really unique. Many other districts don't have a reading framework that they've developed and talked about the different types of instruction. They instead buy curriculum or pieces and go through that. And we made some decisions early on not to do that. And it kind of is all summed up in this quote about what instruction needs to be. It's my belief, and kind of it's why I'm in education, is to find this balance for all of us, to have a system that keeps us together, but also have individual autonomy, both for staff and for students. Because there have to be common experiences, common standards, but everybody learns and teaches a little bit differently. So we developed a framework to match those needs. And it's not a new framework. We started this right when I came in. And it's been in progress for quite a while. But I hadn't really had an opportunity to talk about it with the board. So I can give presentations on this for days and have, so I'm not gonna give all the different pieces that went into the framework. But I want you to see what keeps us common from kindergarten all the way through eighth grade. At kindergarten through fifth grade, we know each student's reading level. And we have to make sure that we're meeting those needs. So we have, whether it's in kindergarten or all in middle school, there is a time that you're doing whole group instruction where you have that text and the teacher's modeling those pieces. And then there are small group times where we've looked at what the reading levels look like, and we're matching what text those students need or the different pieces and skills those students need. And then everyone has a time for independent practice as well. And what that allows us to do is to meet the student needs where they're at, also match some of the teacher creativity on how they do that, but keep some commonalities between English learners, special education, PACE, general ed, so that we have a common way to talk about reading instruction. So what does this impact? When we do classroom walkthroughs, the things that I look for are the things that are listed on the reading framework. And we talk about how do you push students through the different levels. What I mean with the reading coaches, we're spending tons of time on the reading framework. Coming up on January eighteenth, there'll be four pieces about guided reading and what that looks like. Now that special education has merged into my department, I'm spending quite a bit of time with special education staff. Got to do that last week with all of our case managers at elementary and middle school and make sure that they are also feeding into the reading framework. Our English learners, our PACE. When I talked before about MTSS and Tier One, what does that instruction looks like? Every single one of our students needs to have all components of that reading framework. And that's what I'm talking about when I talk about Tier One. It's also a time for intervention, where interventionists pull out during guided reading time in the classroom to meet those needs. And then with the new state law, some people are asking me about acceleration and what that looks like. Acceleration happens during that middle column in those reading frameworks where you're picking text and moving students. So you might have in a second grade classroom, students that are at kindergarten level, fifth grade level, sixth grade level. And it's at that time that the texts are appropriate and match the ability of the students. So that helps with our acceleration piece. And currently, the whole reading framework drives much of the elementary scheduling of the day as all those pieces need to fit together. So our specialists can go into the classrooms and so that grade levels can work with the students and the PLC process that was just talked about. That has to be the fastest I've ever done the reading framework. All right, any questions?
Can I have one quick question? So I've given that a couple of questions occasionally. And actually, one person that's kind of regularly asks questions relative to dyslexia. And I think what's kind of at the core of the questions around that is, how are we explicitly teaching phonics, especially at the primary grade levels?
So if you go back to any of the frameworks, the top pieces are all the different types of skills that are pushed through all the different types of instruction. So concepts of print, phonemic awareness, phonics skills. That's expected to whole group instruction where you've got that explicit piece. Then it's practiced in the guided reading piece with the text at their level. And then when students independently read, that skill or the phonics skills are reinforced during independent reading time. So, I mean, some people use that version of guided reading that it's just everybody reading, but it's a very specific way of teaching and reinforcing the skills that have already been dealt with whole class.
Do they have a specific resource that they're able to use to?
Yes, I worked with a group of people that we created a phonics sequence for our kindergarten, first grade, and second grade, and they worked through those different skills to teach the PACE.
The end product of this is our test scores. What do we see, how do we evaluate the result of this? And can you give me a little history of how those evaluations are run?
Sure. Well, we do remember district locals. We also have the state test, but they don't start until third grade. And a lot of the magic of reading has happened well before that. We also use a Phonics of the Now reading level system where each student reads with an adult and you find their just right reading level. And then that's what pushes through guided reading and we keep track of that as well. There's also informal feedback that comes back from students and from staff of, narratively, how they're doing, because there's some writing that happens with reading and things that don't show up on a standardized test. Our reading scores and the state tests have changed, you know, quite a bit. And we've matched that. But what, our scores have stayed pretty level while our demographics have changed quite a bit. So really, we are achieving very, very well. And if you look at how our English learner students are doing or how districts are doing that have the same percentage of English learners that we do, we are outperforming them.
I have a quick question. I'm looking at the three through the five reading framework, and I'm looking at the suggested times. Those times exceed what our students are in PACE. So how are we managing that?
So, here I can put that up for everybody else so you can see what she's talking about. So the flexible grouping or that differentiated time is when PACE occurs. So PACE isn't supposed to be the replacement of all reading instruction. It's that time, that's that just right instruction for the students that are above. And our PACE students get a differentiation or acceleration time every day, as well as our lower students get one or more times of that flexible grouping or just right instruction every day.
But I think independent time that's allowing class is for every level?
Correct.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. And the third oral report is due to one of our favorite topics, financial and facilities management goal update, Dr. Schuler?
Yes, Farley's gonna handle this one. You're gonna see we've made a perfect line right down the senior leadership team. From Dr. Kyle to Dr. Salagi, to Donkless, to Mr. Farley, everybody's getting in on this. I do wanna just say really quickly in a foundation to this that, one, while I know we've spent a lot of time around facilities, make no mistake, providing, I think, the appropriate learning environment for our students. And that includes the facility in which they learn is a goal that's essential to them. So I don't wanna understate this goal as not being central to, I think our mission it very much is. Ms. Farley is gonna take the board through for us what I think is now the next step. So we celebrated tonight through the groundbreaking invitation, kind of the second of the third priorities that I think the board has accomplished around the facility plan. And we turn our attention now to the capital needs that we very much talked about. And so we're not, obviously, it's an oral report tonight, so no decisions are being made tonight. But we wanna introduce the concept to the board tonight, begin to get some of your feedback around this. Because kind of your feedback on this concept that we're gonna introduce today is gonna be essential then as we move forward with some other key processes that are in front of us, such as the development of our five-year financial projections, obviously, the development of our budget, decisions around facility work that's gonna take place in the summer of nineteen, as well as, I think, some key messaging and communication to the community around how I think we're building a very thoughtful plan to address this. So turn it over to Mr. Farley.
Sure. Tonight, we're bringing forward just an update on our board financial facility goals. As Dr. Schuler mentioned, it makes it important to remind, as you look at the school work plan, and this has been, discussions have been going on back to the summer relative to the work we're doing, appreciation to the board finance and facilities committee who have helped as we go through this process and we've discussed how all these are applying. Really, I think as we talked about, as we go into these meetings, three, three key factors come into play that we remind ourselves all the time as we have discussions relative to our funding facilities. First is the board will pass a balanced budget and that's true board policy. That's noted up here. So we know as we go into this process, we are, a balanced budget is the primary goal that we have to look at as we start making these discussions. Second, we have a board fund balance policy, which we're putting in place seven, eight years ago now. There gives us a range between twenty-five and forty percent of where we wanna be as far as our district with our overall fund balance. We also, as we had fund balance policy, say that we are within that targeted range and we have funds available, that we put that towards capital work. And finally, the Sherman Durgis formula, which we instituted two or three years ago as well, gives us to target as far as what we should be allocating, setting aside, really set aside, what we're allocating for our capital needs. Our school district, that's a formula we work through. Facilities Committee and JR has worked as far as keeping that model updated as we do work and as we look for our overall capital spend and where we're going to go. The other piece that tied into this as well is our debt, future debt is charged. We've seen this before. Yeah, just a quick reminder that the granny area in the background is what the debt was set to look like. Obviously, a slight in twenty twenty-two through a four-phase process, which three of these phases have been clean. You can see we've leveled that off. Actually, next year for the FY two thousand and fifteen, eleven, you'll actually see about a million dollar drop in our overall debt. And that levels off across through twenty twenty-two. And then twenty twenty-three, there's a four million dollar drop. And then it goes down more towards the debt is found. So again, as we look at our debt availability of all revenues, this is our debt trajectory for something again, the board should be clearly aware of the same debt. So targeted work, mostly two thousand and seventeen, reprieve after it was unsuccessful. The board identified three key areas of work that we need to address. First was secure entries. There are eight buildings that had been identified to a project that were in need of having secure entry work done. Again, we had secured doors. We did have visitor rights to get into our office areas. So that was obviously a key project that we wanted to do. And that was completed, obviously, this past summer, all eight schools. So now we have all of our schools have that, say, an entry process for buildings. So that work is completed. The second thing was the Jerk's Children's Child Center, which was a part of a successful. And all that work is now in progress. We're talking about our groundbreaking as well as our scheduled, non-scheduled for the process of getting that building built, so it's open in twenty twenty. Thank you very much. And then finally, we have the projects identified in our capital plan that are in progress. And just for the purpose of review, over the past two summers, since the reprieve was unsuccessful, we've done a number of major projects throughout the district that have kept JR and his staff very busy. We are roofing, we've mentioned secure entry work, flooring, base rework, paving, tech rework, HVC, a lot of work for about seven point three million dollars over the last two years. So looking forward, we asked JR and the Facilities Committee to review potential projects for the summer of two thousand and nineteen. Again, along the same lines and the same type of work that I outlined here, the different projects and where the work will be done. So it's obviously a significant amount of work at multiple facilities throughout the district. At the same time that we're building the early childhood center. And you can see that there's about eight million dollars of identified work that is identified off our capital projects plan that JR has indicated work that we're gonna try and get done this summer. Obviously, this would all be done through any process. We always hold the numbers, except the name is the number we're carrying in our overall capital plan. You can see we have a number of identified work. And some of this includes alternate works for roofing and other projects that we may choose to do if we're going to do a whole roof. There may be other sections we wanna get done at that time. So this is something that, and JR reminds me constantly that we wanna, we don't wanna start committing this too late. So obviously, as we talk about decision-making, we wanna start getting work identified and getting bids out on the street so we can get it done. Some of the doors and some of the other things have long been in time. So we wanna make sure that we get those bids out as soon as possible. To achieve this, the Finance Committee is looking at a four-year funding plan. Again, since we don't have the final audit with board yet and we're still in the process of working with the board Finance Committee on assumptions for our financial five-year plan, we obviously will look at some type of plan to pay for these projects and incorporate that into that funding model. As Dr. Schuler previously mentioned, we did have a good fiscal year last year. We did improve on our fund balances for the audits. Except we'll see our fund balance actually went, overall percentage went up even with some transfers that were made for early reading center and early childhood center and for some other work we did in the district. But one of the things we talked about in the last Finance Committee was looking at a four-year funding plan to try and get up to that seven million dollar figure, which ties back to the Sherman Durgis formula. And by doing so, we looked at a commitment of increasing budget by. And by doing so, we looked at a commitment of increasing budget management for capital spend of a million a year over the next four years. And at the same time to meet the difference, we would, the fund balance, again, want to stay within our fund balance policy, but increase our dedication of some fund balance of $3 million, $2 million, $1 million to a point where our overall budget is at a point where we're spending around the Sherman-Durgis figure each year built into our overall operating budget for each fiscal year. I believe you have a spreadsheet also identified, Dr. Schuler included in your green page as well. That's just all I think as well.
Yep, so just to do the crosswalk for you. So you have in your green folder as well, a spreadsheet that walks from fiscal year 19 all the way out to fiscal year 27. I saw a couple of people looking at this, so let me just kind of help you with the crosswalk. If you are putting the debt service payment number that's on the spreadsheet up next to the debt service payment that's in the presentation, they actually do match. But that chart is built on levy year. Levy year does not match to fiscal year. So levy year 2017 aligns to fiscal year 19. So remember, as we pass the levy, by the time that levy funds a budget, the budget number is always the second of the calendar years that that budget covers. So there's that two-year gap between the numbering of levy year and fiscal year. So levy year 2017, that debt service number, again, was just a hair over $20 million. That's how it aligns in the chart. So if you put them up that way, those numbers do align as you move across. And again, so this is a concept, right? This is a concept that we introduced to the finance committee to start to lay out. I want to, just a couple of things that I want to highlight in here. So under Sherman-Durgis, Sir Sherman-Durgis forecasts the amount of money that should be spent on capital improvement. Does not say that that money can only come out of the current year budget. That budget can come from current year budget allocation or the use of fund balance, if appropriate, to draw it down. Obviously, in fiscal '20, that's our upcoming year, if we immediately jump from a $4 million budget allocation to a $7 million budget allocation, you're gonna have two potential concern points there. Either A, you're gonna have a very difficult time balancing the budget, or B, you're gonna make some incredibly painful decisions that are gonna impact the student experience in order to be able to immediately jump that $3 million divide. And so I do want to remind you, just historically, if we brought some history to this chart, it was really only two years ago where your capital spend number was a little over a million dollars. This is the capital spend number, not including the million-dollar commitment that you're making out of the budget on an annual basis to that lease service payment, to what you're doing in there. So what we've done is tried to map out kind of a four-year ramp where we're slowly drawing from fund balance, bringing up that annual budget allocation each year to the point where, within four years, we get the board through your budget to that Sherman-Durgis target, right? That's a part of your move, right? So the assumption in this chart is that, obviously, you would be able to balance your budget every year. That's something that we'll have to, obviously, continue to work on. That's difficult to model in this chart. But you are still consistent with your fund balance policy. At no point, even as you draw down, do you drop below 25%. So what you'll see as you move out, that at the low point, we don't have the percentage model, but in actual dollars, you are always $5 million above what would be that 25% floor within your fund balance. So rather than modeling it in a percentage, we modeled it in dollars for you so that you can see it meeting your Sherman-Durgis allocation. So you're monitoring, you're adhering to those three key policies. But I think, most important, I shouldn't say most important, from my perspective advantage to this, we're not modeling or suggesting to the board that you do anything that adds to the debt service over the next four to five years. And so that type of discipline in terms of how you manage your long-term debt would also get not only this board, but future boards to a place where they have, A, a lot more flexibility in terms of future decisions on how work gets funded, but for the community, realistically, gets you to a point where you are looking at debt service completely falling off from the district, or significantly reducing, right, for the district. And so I think that that's a positive thing, both in terms of, obviously, honoring commitments that you made to the community over the last 12 months, but also setting people up with much greater flexibility moving forward in terms of how the capital work gets managed. And again, you know, what you can see over a four-year period of time is you are taking a meaningful chunk out of your capital improvement work, right? We modeled in the 2017 referendum, an $84 billion capital improvement need, but we projected that as an eight-to-10-year solution for the board. And so that's one of the reasons we also went out as far as we did on this, because if you stayed consistent with that trend, in addition to what's already taken place over the last couple of years, you are knocking almost $70 million off of that capital plan. So you are doing a meaningful chunk of work at the $7.2 million clip every year, which, again, obviously, can be adjusted. So no final decisions. What we really just wanted to get your thoughts are, kind of get your feedback on this concept. Because if it's of interest, it will drive, obviously, our planning for summer '19, which we've got to get started on very soon as we start to plan out that work, but also as we model projections. This would be an important concept to have some feedback from the board as to what you think of it so that we can start to model projections for you.
Dr. Schuler, do we anticipate addressing the fourth phase of the debt refinancing by the spring?
That is when we're scheduled to do it. And of course, this chart is built on the assumption that you will complete that last phase of the restructure. If you don't do that, you will not take, you will not knock that ski slope off that's in the background.
What is the date of that? We, Mr. Schuler?
We've been in spirit.
We'll do it?
Yeah, what's the earliest date?
Probably May. We probably, I think we still were planning closing it July.
May to, May to July of 2019, correct?
So what we're saying is, is in the next four years, we're gonna be able to tackle all of this without going out to the community and asking for one.
Correct. This plan does not include any ask for additional referendum or non-referendum.
I think, I kind of disagree with that statement. I think that what we're challenged with, as we will now move into the second phase, is this is the building side, is the financing side. And we have to get the projections of the use, you know, again, the ability to spend roughly a year, you know, without the consumption of fund balance. You know, like, you look at that one last phase, there's about $3 million fund balance out of the egg. So that means we've got to find in the budget, $5 million. And we've spent, you know, in the last couple of years, $3 million? I mean, I guess we budgeted $3 million is a better way to say it.
Yeah, $7.3 million the last couple of summers.
We spent, but we budgeted how much out of operations?
It was 3.2 last year, and a million was out of capital projects the year before that. And there was $3 million, there was just another $3 million.
Okay, so what we're saying is, if we just conceivably, we've had a balanced budget over the last few years. I mean, you know, we've been better than that. But we've got $3 million set aside. In the first year of this, we're looking at $4 million. Okay, so we have to find a million next year. And the second year, we have to find another million after that. So I mean, there's still challenges on the financial side that we have to move forward. And, you know, I guess the other, you know, the other comment I have on this is that, you know, we, you know, this, I like calling this the Gambiani formula versus the Sherman-Durgis, seriously. Because Sherman-Durgis, technically, you're setting up reserves for the next time the roof has to be repaired. And this is paying for the deferred things that we ended up fast with. So technically, Sherman-Durgis is a future funding, you know, putting aside a dollar today so when the roof is gonna be needed in 20 years, we'll have accumulated itself. We're on a current spending approach, or the Gambiani. So, mind if I, okay. So, you know, I think there's still, you know, we've got, I think what we've said here is that this, you know, we're working toward finding those dollars. And I think that's the next challenge that we're gonna be approaching, you know, finance committee this week coming up. And then, as we look at the assumptions we gather, going to that next step, and say, will this all fit in? Now that we get all of the facilities committee saying that they're spending $1 million here. So, and again, you know, I just, and then who knows if there's a roof or something that, you know, another million that pops up or something. So, you know, we have to kind of worry about that all the time, too. So again, I just want to go back. We said that back in the referendum in '17, we had eighty-some thousand give a day. Of that eighty-four, okay, we spent, what, $15 million over these last two years?
Seven.
Or will be by the time, '19 is next is the fiscal year we're in, okay? So this is the summer of '19. So that would be actually fiscal year '20, okay? So we'll have spent some of that. And then this program goes on one, two, three, four years, so that counts for roughly '28. So we have to then continue with that. And that also assumes there's no inflation or things like that that pop up.
Yeah, I recall that in your capital improvement plan, there are inflationary elements built into that, right? So it assumes based on years going out that they're not all present dollars, they are going out.
Okay, so the 84 million takes that into account, okay? So we'll need to continue this program beyond the four-year program, obviously, to get that eight-to-10-year cycle completely. So, you know, I think, again, we're absolutely giving the right attention to this project and this program and catching up with the past. And, you know, it's just a matter of how we can get this into the numbers without affecting other aspects. You know, I think, I think it was his day up today, I started about, you know, they had a referendum fail, they're now starting to cut programs, so they can do exactly what we're gonna be trying to do here. So, you know, we're not home free yet until we get the second phase of this financing, or the, you know, the budgetary changes, I'll call it, to allow us to spend those $8 million actually on operations.
Yeah, Bill, I agree with Mr. Matheson. The, this is a great placeholder, no question. But clearly, the truth is in all the line items on the budget. I want to see the revenue streams. You know, there's gonna be, in a few years, there'll be another teacher contract negotiation. And there's a lot of moving parts, which we just have to account for. And so when I look at these numbers, these are just a few of the expense items. And we haven't even seen the revenue line item. So at some point in time, that's gonna bring more value to me and better clarity relative to, is this real or memorex? But it's a good placeholder and a good starting point, as Mr. Matheson says. But for me to start giving really good credence to this as a finance committee member, I'm gonna need to see the whole, all the elements, if you will. Because there will be some significant moving parts, some of which we can control, some of which we cannot. So we'll move on at that point.
Yeah, and again, all those pieces will be a part of that five-year projection piece, right? But if the concept, obviously, if this concept makes no sense to anybody to even think through, then we wouldn't necessarily build these elements, at least on the expenditure side, into that set of projections. And last, kind of just because I think both of you made it, make no mistake, I'm not trying to paint a picture that increasing that budget allocation by a million dollars every year is an easy lift, right? If it were, we should have been doing it a long ago. So this is still going to require some lifting, right? It's not, you know, a jump of a $4 million shift in that that, you know, creates a wholesale need to make major cuts to programs. But this is going to be a lift as we move forward. Certainly, it's going to impact the ability to consider, like, major programmatic additions, right? As we continue to explore, get asked questions about, you know, things like, you know, later high school start times, it might carry multimillion-dollar costs associated with it. That would be extremely difficult, right, to consider some major programmatic elements. But what I will say is that, in large part, this phased-in approach probably gets us to a reset point that we probably should have been in, right, candidly. So this is a reset process, which is gonna be difficult to make a few decisions that are still gonna be difficult as we kind of get ourselves back over a period of time to kind of this reset where we probably should have been in that collectively.
One I wanted you to mention there was, you made reference to the teacher salaries and so on in the future. I want to thank, again, our administration, Dr. Reimer as well, for their successes in settling a contract for four years just recently for this district without a strike, with a, you know, with a fair and equitable settlement of numbers and so on. And things that I read about in the, was it the TAVI or GEE, you know, and things that, you know, we were concerned with, step and ladder approach, I call it. You know, it's just that we planned that ahead, we got it done. You know, and I'm so happy that we did not get a strike that went on in that district. That's so damaging, and, you know, that was really a great achievement, so thank you all.
Just to that point, you know, thanking also the teachers who worked with us, right? It was collaborative, it was a partnership, it was a long-term view. That goes such a long way. You know, you watch the news, and I am thankful, every time I turn that news on, for our teachers, for our administration, for what goes on in this district, it's amazing. So that collaboration and partnership is awesome. So thank you to the teachers as well for helping us get it.
All right, any other comments? So I'll just kind of wrap this up, my understanding. So this is a roadmap, so to speak. It doesn't have all the answers yet, but it's a roadmap that would enable us to make significant investment in our buildings to kind of get into that capital facility plan. It would enable us to comply with our three policies and do it in a manner, at least for the next roughly four years, without having to add new debt into our charts that are still on page. Those are the three parameters that we would be able to accomplish if we were able to execute this really every year. Every year, this is a decision-making process that has to happen. And there's factors that come into play that we might not know outside of our district influences. Say, although, in the economy, it's, okay? Okay, any other questions on that? All right, I guess we have discussion items. We have another one of our favorite discussion items, the student fee discussion. Dr. Schuler?
Mr. Farley, and he doesn't get to go anywhere. So this is a follow-up. Last year, as we reviewed fees with the board, there was a request as we get ready to review fees this year for some additional information relative to our fees specifically for activity athletic programs. So you're not at the point yet, this board, where you have to make a decision around fees. So you have this information early so that you have some time to digest it. No decision being made again around this tonight. But I'm gonna let Mr. Farley walk you through the chart that you have in front of you. And then, again, you know, a little bit of conversation around it. But the goal tonight was just to kind of get this in front of you so you can start to digest it. And then we'll forecast for you some decision points coming up.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. And you have, John, who is, first of all, I'd like to thank the finance committee for reviewing the piece on the go, maybe for two months, maybe two months ago now, early October. Did review and talked a little bit about the fees the board education was looking for us relative to fees and athletics and activities. What you have for you is an updated document, thanks to the high school athletic directors and activities directors, because there's information on activities as well. Where we tried to look at it. we try to look at it as well. Information that the chart you have shows you the little screens of fall sports. We have that information out for this, for this school year. So the athletic directors were able to finalize it with the other information relative to fall sports. The board is okay with the format, which is somewhat similar to what we see in the past. We'll continue it on. We'll update with better information once those sports are included. As Dr. Schuler mentioned, a few little processes happens later this spring. But just again, the, the information is pretty helpful with the same. It adds additional information relative to fee collection, which obviously I need as well as free reduce students who don't pay the fees and what's, and to see if they owe certain revenue. We also illustrate a lot of the expenses that we paid for the school district. One off to the right then is you'll see there's what's in the bag is fundraising and or apparent contributions that you have as a document possible for the Finance Committee as to what are these programs generating as far as fundraising or cost of parents to write a check to the program to cover certain aspects. And what we did, on this as well, as we give you a percent of the students' funding, assuming those expenditures, all of those expenditures, fundraising or going in the program, you can see that perhaps obviously the overall contribution of the district. But we also listed below uses of, tried to summarize this for you, the uses of additional revenues overall. We just mentioned pool down there where it was going through budget reductions, we're talking about the swimming program, the positive, the panel of the power tool was for parents as a fundraiser of parents or direct parent contributions in order to maintain that program. So the parents since that time have maintained the pool down, so you can see that indicated on this form as well. As you go down the list of sources of additional revenue, you see a lot of the different clocks, as we mentioned, capacity, uniforms, apparel, rent here, travel here, also for transportation costs associated to go to, obviously, any or other types of personing trips. You also see competition fees when you get into some of the activities that we listed on page as you see, there's also, or, 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 and some other competition related to music, the music programs also, right, it's harder to go there. So you can see the overall, for athletics, the overall, the spending of the district is about twenty-four percent, which means the rest of the revenues are pretty different from the overall cost of the board. That percentage drops to about sixty percent compared to that again, assuming it's kind of given expenditures that are generated from fundraising and direct parent contributions. Again, this chart, most of it's similar to what we did at Anson, that we asked by type of difference, the question, the format, the information, right, on the table.
Yeah, is there, what's the motivation for leaving the activities separate from the sports in the layout? I'd like, I'd like to see the activities laid out the same ways we can compare activities and sports together, if possible. I think the participation of some of the activities is quite high and I'd like to see that balance if that's possible.
I did, again, a lot of the activities, when you look at those charts.
Hey, no, both of them, I can't remember.
Sorry. When you look at the charts for the activities, the direct expenses, most of those are related to salaries and to transportation. That's the majority of the overall costs. You can see the, how the use of funds are outlined as well as the program. We can try and work with the activities correctly, put it into a similar format as that was a pet was helpful. There's different nuances to the activities that we wanted to try and capture in this spreadsheet that illustrates a little bit about the, about the thread. Well, that is a little bit of that.
Yeah, the motivation for me, because one program, programs I happen to know are these band programs, right? And if you look at the funding for South versus North, it's very different than what the district is paying. But also if you look at the participants, there's a big swing difference in participants. So I'd be interested to see how that plays out. I'd like to see how that compares also to the sports programs.
Um, Phil, I appreciate you, you laid this out. I know I was one of the people in the last year that, that really wanted to know especially about, about fundraising. I guess my question that I still have is, what are we, what are the expectations for fundraising? Because I think sometimes what the district feels, we're saying in terms of fundraising is this is your, maybe your goal, but I think the message that's being heard from like parents and students is this is required. So I guess what I want to know is, are there any required fundraisers? And if so, what are we asking? Because there are some sports where, or activities where I'm hearing from, you know, from parents that, oh, we need to, we need to sell three hundred dollars worth of these cards, we need to sell five hundred dollars worth of this, and that that's the expectation and the parents are writing the check for the difference because they can't find anyone to do it. Is there, is that an expectation or is that a suggestion? And how is that message being conveyed?
Chris, I'm going to be very honest with you, I don't think you're ever going to get a complete answer to that. I mean, that's a fair question, I get it. I don't think you're going to get a, a fair answer to it. I think the, in, in the big picture, right, the, the reality is when you look at revenue and expenditure, that if we are uncomfortable with the fact that exactly what you're just talking about is a part of the fundraising process, right? You can't effectively raise funds if you don't challenge people that are raising funds with targets, right? You've got to give them goals and you've got to, you've got to push to that. I see it as a parent this year of a high school student where I know the message that they're being given to try to meet a fundraising goal, right, is, is aggressive. So I think that is going to be a part of the fundraising process. Also, I think tied into if you're doing significant fundraising is the fact that parents are going to approach that differently. Some parents are going to say to their kids, I don't want you going out and selling to friends, neighbors, whatever, so I'm going to write the check. And others are going to be more comfortable with, you know, students going out and soliciting those, those sales. So I, I think if ultimately we're not comfortable with that process, then in the big picture, a decision we have to make is that the hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars that was raised that went to these expenditures, either we have to say to the programs, you can't spend any of this money, you can't do the stuff that it's being used for, or we have to look at a different model for fee that somehow is going to take fundraising out of the picture by probably equally distributing that across athletes that are participating, NKA a much different fee structure.
So one of the questions I know I had, I had last time when we were doing fees is, what is that money being spent for? And, and how are we monitoring that? Because in some cases, and from what I'm hearing, you know, if, if people are fundraising for things that are basics, that are required and needed to be able to use that sport, I question, why are we fundraising for them and why aren't we paying for that? If it's for tournaments and things like that, when does it become excessive? Like who is, who's monitoring that? And do we have an equitable between both of our schools?
Yeah, so what I will tell you is we have a process. It is monitored by the athletic director in every one of those circumstances. So the athletic directors for their own internal workflow have a much more detailed kind of flow of information that, that knows sport by sport. What are we fundraising for? How much are we gathering and what's that money being used for? So, and they have an approval process for those fundraising activities, meaning that clearly like the, you know, message is if you're going to raise funds, there need, there has to be a targeted need that that's being raised for. We're not just going out to raise thirty thousand dollars just so we have it to spend, right? There's a targeted need and so there is a process in place that's through the athletic directors that's, that's ultimately overseeing that.
And then where is the oversight at the district level to ensure that it's equitable between both schools? That's my, do we have that process in place and shouldn't we have that process in place so that one school isn't doing something that's significantly different than another school in terms of fundraising?
If you're, if you're going to continue to allow fundraising to happen, you are going to have inequities. You're going to have inequities, right? There isn't, I'm just going to tell you in that model, you're, you're going to have a difficult time getting to complete equity. If you really want equity in terms of spend and opportunity, then you centralize that as much as possible. You raise all the revenue, you distribute all the expenditure through, only through budget distribution. This model that we have does allow for a degree of local control and decision-making around individual programs that have a target, something they want to do. There is an approval process that they go through, but, but I guess to your question, I don't know that there is a deep equity lens across, no, you can't do this in the basketball program itself because we're not doing it in the basketball program anymore. Those are programs that have some autonomy in terms of, you know, what they're, what they're raising for. If, if that kind of thing, equity in terms of opportunity for kids is the, kind of the, the prevalent concept you want to get to, then I think it's got, we, we are going to have to take kind of this right part of the spreadsheet and really rethink that, right? In terms of either just saying none of those opportunities are available anywhere, or we got to increase the revenue through fees and completely control it then through budget allocation. Which, you know, if, if you move across again outside of a couple of anomalies, certainly when you look at all of the other expenditure piece, there's some, some slight fluctuations that change each year based on number of contests that somebody's hosting home versus away football games and all of that that impacted. But, but there's pretty equitable distribution in the other piece, save the fact that even your structure for paying the coaches has something to do with experience and elements in the contract that it may not be exactly the same from one school to the other, but it's much more equitable than the piece on the right.
In my first year on the board, I think you, or you recall this, there was an effort by a group of parents and supporters of one of our high schools to kick off a major fundraising campaign to, to instruct, that would finance the construction of some major facility improvements enhancements at one of the schools. And they sought, I'm not sure if they sought formal approval from the board, but encouraged one endorsement of that approach. And board at that time decided not to endorse that approach. And I can tell you that generated some hard feelings from a major portion of the population of the parents and supporters of that one school. So if there is some thought that somehow we want to adopt a policy of equity and central control, I would encourage that we go through a very extensive community engagement process beforehand, so a year, what, what our residents feel about that as well, because we've got experience generating some different perspective.
Okay, then, can you help me think through the, you know, the unintended consequences that this takes of my personal point of view? So my personal point of view is I don't like when students are asked to sell, whether it's door-to-door or family members or whatever it might be. It's just a personal point of view. But I am very much in favor of students participating in a fundraising that's organized by a coach or some type, with some type of district oversight. Does, does changing the guideline like that have unintended consequences or is something I haven't thought about?
Yeah, yeah, it's something I'd want to, I'd want to think about. I mean, I think, you know, to, to some degree, one of the things that I do know that the two schools are cognizant of as well is not having like, like fundraisers that simply trip over each other and are doing exactly the same thing. So there's probably, to some degree, a limited amount of opportunity for, you know, if this group's selling cards, we don't want ten teams selling the same cards, right, into the same activity. So I, I don't know, I'd have to think through what would be the, the consequence of it. I would, I would guess that if you limit fundraisers by saying you can't do anything that involves any kind of direct sale, even to family and friends, you probably put a pretty tight bracket around what those opportunities are that they exist to do some fundraising if there isn't some potential sale element in it.
I'd like to, you know, I, I've seen these numbers. I think the Finance Committee one time was put in charge or had the charge of trying to figure this out and so on. I just, you know, I just keep coming back to the same place. I, I don't, you know, I don't, philosophically, on one hand, what's the cost per student? Where are all these charge costs? You know, I think again, we're providing an education and if we buy into the thought that the extracurricular activities, the band, the sports teams are part of that process, it is what it is and it costs us a number of dollars. I, I guess, you know, I don't know that the board members are capable of making a decision on this without basically a recommendation, you know, from administration based on whatever happens in the rest of the world. You know, because I keep cycling around. I mean, what, what, what is the effective way? I mean, one of the cuts that Hinsdale was about, I was sports program. Well, now we have a number that, you know, maybe it's half a million dollars a year. You know, not that I want to cut sports, but I mean, that's a number, so what? You know, that's a different type of decision that we're looking at, whether we raise money or don't. You know, we have another sport that's coming on here, you know, potentially. So I, I guess, I, I, I think that we need to set up some general guidelines of, you know, whether it's fundraising programs or whatever, because if we keep talking about specific line-by-line million, specific programs and so on, you know, and I think we keep just circling around the same drain. And I, I just, I don't know where we'll get anywhere eventually, you know? So I think we need, you know, the gathered facts now here and, you know, let's say that, you know, maybe on a club, if we, if we don't get more than ten members, it shouldn't exist, maybe those kind of things. And maybe that's not true either. I just think that I don't feel I'm in a position to make these kind of decisions for, you know, these specific programs, you know? Or, you know, maybe we should say that every program should, has to be funded sixty percent. I mean, you know, I, I don't know. I, I don't have enough serious feel for what that is and, because it kind of works now. We pay what we pay. And I don't know that we can tweak it or try to balance it everywhere. I, I, you know, I think, you know, when we go and visit the schools, we hear about the kids, how much they enjoy that aspect of going to the clubs and so on, you know? So I think we have to make sure we're incorporating all the kids in the programs and, and, you know, there's a lot of sport opportunities that, you know, allow kids to go to college that might not otherwise go to college, you know? So that's part of the funding of, of the sporting programs. So, you know, and there's some endowments, I would bet, you know? And, you know, I look here that, you know, some of these games are better this year than last year just because the team did better a lot, you know? So I, I think, I, I just need to have what I would call some good general guidelines and philosophically how we want to approach this, you know, versus trying to come up with line-by-lines, you know, or say, you know, is fundraising okay or not, or, you know, or, you know, or who's in charge at the high schools maybe? You know, this is, we, we give the mission to the principal and say, okay, you can raise, you know, like we do with their kind of discretionary budgets of the high schools. You know, this is the kind of thing that you have to collectively say that you guys are on the front line and here's, you know, we can raise or have X number of programs and let's, you know, if the football team wants to do this and the, you know, the band wants to do this, you know, those are all part of that program, but if, you know, you can't overdo it or you can't be competitive, but some ways controlled other than at this level. I just, I, I can't, I can't get a handle on this, at this level. So that's my feeling on it.
I get back, I wrote the word down, I get back to intent. What's the intent? What are we trying to achieve by the board? Which I think is what you're getting at a little bit. And for me, I think, I, I'll just go back to, we heard a lot from lacrosse team, the parents, the kids, and it was inspiring. It was awesome to hear those kids talking about the opportunities, what they've been able to achieve, what they've done after sports. We heard, we heard from some graduates, right? I thought it was fantastic. And so as I've been thinking about this, you know, the intent for me is to make sure every dollar that engages the most kids possible, whether it's sports or other activities. I mean, you go down, turn the, turn the list over, all the stuff that's going on, right? I mean, you go down, turn the list over, all the stuff that's going on, right? Yearbooks, student council, class sponsors. All of that is engaging students in something outside of the classroom. And I think that's possible. I just want to make sure every dollar we're spending is getting the most kids engaged in all those things. How do we put kids in or address? How do we give kids opportunities? How do we expand what they're understanding? So that, to me, is the intent. How we get to it, I think we have to try to figure out a little bit. I think my second point is going back to listening. We've heard, I've heard from our community, you know, the fundraising aspect of it. There's a frustration with it. I can't put my finger on it. I don't even have a good idea on how to fix it. I can share with everybody my point of view, which I did. But other than that, I'm not sure how to address it. So the intent is to engage the most kids possible. And the second point is listening to the community and hearing that there are people who are frustrated. I think those are the two things I would like to focus on.
And some quick questions. One, it's helpful on the sports to have the column that shows us the number of participants per sport. Is it possible to see that, the activities too? So that we know what we're spending money on and like offset how many kids that applies to?
Yeah, we'll try to pull that information together. I think, you know, part of it is some of the clubs, it just shows up surveys. So club participation is great, so participation. We do have our participation models I think to run. A lot of them have us as well. But yes, we could work, go back to the student-based terms specifically. Yet some of it will be a lot easier to get than others, but we can try to pull that information together.
My other question relates to fundraising. And it makes me wonder if there's some way for all the sports teams at a particular school to collaborate in some way and the fundraising effort that goes into the athletic program as opposed to a piecemeal of the soccer team knows this and the swimming team does that and whatnot. Here in the area, one model that comes to mind, there's a five-year race that goes around every spring called the Human Race. And it's a collaboration among a lot of social services organizations in the area who on their own would be too small to be able to pull off some sort of fundraising athletic event. But they come in and I don't know what the formula is, but depending on how many people come and participate and, you know, check off that they want to be supporting your organization, you get some of the fees that come back out and whatnot. So it just makes me wonder if there's some way to be able to orchestrate.
I kind of like that what you just said about maybe having a consolidated pot that's directed by somebody. And I'm not sure I'm on a principal doing that, but whatever. But, you know, that then is allocated amongst the sports. And in that way, you kind of control the activities potentially as well. I think that's an interesting item. And getting back to Chris's point, if we need to raise money for football helmets, we should have football helmets, you know? That really isn't, I'm not quite clear with all the fundraising support. So I think that maybe that consolidated pool at each school or whatever might be an effective way to kind of achieve that. And again, if it's something specific or a necessary safety item or a this or that, you know, that would be, you know, that'd be a way that we need to look at that a little differently than whether it's not. Maybe we take away some of the costs, you know, these approaches. I like those two thoughts, Rob.
Yeah, just in closing, I think what I have to solve this problem, this has been before the Finance Committee for probably five, six years. And I guess I've always asked the same question. What is the end game? A little bit to Rob's point. We're losing a half a million dollars a year. Are we okay with losing a half a million dollars or aren't we? If we are, we move on and dismiss this topic. If we're not, then we have to have people who are smarter than I anyway at the senior leadership team. And people have to bring some ideas on how we shrink that. You know, and I'd say this every time we have this topic. You know, the $660,000 of expenses, 68% are coach salaries. Don't have an answer for that. That's just an observation. That's a big number. Almost 70% of total expenditures are coaches' fees. We need coaches, I get it. But I'm just saying, what is the end game? If we're trying to shrink the half a million dollar loss per year, if someone brings something forward to us, then we'll try to support it. If we're not, we just have to accept the fact it's a lost leader, but it's good for the kids, it's good for the school, and we move on. So that, I think, that's where we've got to give some guidance to the guys. I mean, if it's really, give this as a mutual, you know, situation, then we have to make some tough decisions.
I think, as I said, would challenge us that that's probably a conversation we need to have together. Because I didn't, I'm not initiating this conversation. I'm not suggesting we have this conversation because you're trying to get to a complete cost neutral point on all activities. I think the part of this conversation started because we had, we did, you know, going back a couple of years, as we look at the percentage of the cost that the district was underwriting, we accept the fact that there are some costs that increase incrementally over time. Whether they need the salaries associated with those that are running the programs, the cost for officials, other purchase services, then go up. And so there has to be a point where perhaps what we charge to kids has some reset points as well. So I think we started this conversation around saying we ought to know what percentage the district is covering, track that over time. And when we start to see that percent shift a bit where we're underwriting, you know, 74% currently, when that starts to creep up closer to 76, 77, 80%, then maybe that's time for a bit of resetting fee to say it's a fair time to consider going for $150, $160, or $170. That was the concept that started this. But then, like I said, we, what kind of came into this is kind of where there's a whole fundraising element fit into this. And I don't have an easy solution for that other than to, you know, I don't have an easy solution for it. So that was my end game, I guess, when we had the conversation, is every year we're charged with bringing fees to the board. And the easy solution to that fee discussion is just to never change them because then we don't have to have the discussion about why. But there are points where we have to reset them. And that's then where we have to look at. It's helpful to look at a guiding philosophy so that we're establishing some groundwork for when do we come back and revisit it in the future. And when an opportunity like lacrosse comes up, that may also be an opportunity to say, you know, we phased it in under one model to see that it was sustainable, to see that students would participate. But then at some point, we're either going to leave that out forever on its own model or incorporate it underneath the funding model we have. But then bringing that in and maintaining the 74% piece may also mean we have to reset fees a bit to bring a little bit of revenue in to kind of keep us at the same element. That is a concept that, or the lens, I guess, I'd say I brought to the conversation. But if that matches the interest of the board or you have a different problem you'd like for us to attack or try to solve, whatever it were.
My intention when I brought this up last year was I just want to know the true cost to a parent. And that was what I was trying to get at. And we can say the fee is $150, but if the expectation is another $1,000 out of the parent's pocket, to me, that's $1,150 to do that activity or sport. And that's just, that's where I was trying to get at was what is the true cost to the families to participate in these activities? That was my intention.
So let me try to wrap this up because I wrote down the word "end game" too. So I think it's, we've had this conversation, I would say, in earnest since last summer after the rough run. And I think there was a lot of interest of the board to look at all these different buckets on how we could increase our revenue. And this was one of the ones that got us into that conversation. And this research we've been doing and the way this is presented is great. I'd like to, you know, at the end of the summer, maybe add the spring scores after this. We have a full year look to see if there's a dollar button. You know, I think one end game is the board deciding or getting a recommendation from the administration. There's, here's where we want to be, either increase or decrease the fees or whatever parameters we establish. That seems like one pattern for recommendation. But the other one that's kind of involved is the fundraising. And, you know, do we need to do something different? Not fundraising, you know, Rob doesn't like it. I think sales are important. Maybe it's too young to put that on our students to do that door-to-door. But I think those are the two kind of buckets that where we need to, as a board and a district, kind of zero one of those two things that we can not just go through and update this over and over again. I think with this kind of data for the first school year completing next spring, I think we'll have great data. In my opinion, what I'm hearing is those are the two components that we're kind of looking for. Is that fair, Summer?
I think it is, but I don't know where the solve comes in that conversation. You know, I keep, you know, we've got data. We've got, we could have gone back and learned more data. I just, you know, I feel like we have to have, maybe with the athletic director, some conversation there to see if there's better input that we can get. I don't know, I just, I don't know that we'll reach a conclusion based on anything that we will talk, you know, talk on.
And I guess the other question that I've been to note and to bring to a close, right? So when we're trying to solve a problem, that problem can come from one of two places. Obviously, it comes from my staff bringing to you as a board, we see a need to revamp a model that's not working for us. And here's our recommendation. Or obviously, you as a board, through your community lens, what you're hearing from the constituents you represent, you bring a problem to say the way you're approaching something's not working based on feedback that we're hearing from the community. So I do want to say just from the inside perspective, well, it's not perfect. We're not bringing to you, I guess, a suggestion that the way that this is being handled isn't working from our perspective. So I guess what I would say is if you look to say, Jeff, bring us a recommendation, what I would likely bring to you is going to be some tweak of this current system, not an overhaul. Because I don't, I don't believe I'm not hearing, at least internally, that it's a complete mess, we can't control, we don't like, you know, it's not working. That I would need input from you if you really are saying, based on what you're hearing collectively representing the community, this is not working, we can bring you that option to fix it. But just know, I guess, if you leave it to me or say, what would you bring? I would likely bring you some tweaking of this current model that Mark's facing with us.
And I agree with that, Jeff. I think if there is a problem with fundraising, you have anecdotal information. And that's all that's anecdotal. I would suggest we consider this. I'm not saying, certainly won't make any sense, but maybe we want a student survey, parents to see their reaction to everything about fundraising, particularly at the high school, that's where it's normally takes place. See how those results come back to see if we really have a problem with fundraising. I appreciate how valuable all of our community contacts are, but I'm not sure they're comprehensive enough to make a, be a decision about whether we need to handle them or not.
You have an advisory committee as well. And so maybe this is a topic that you want to give to an advisory committee to spend some time with, wrestle with, determine the best way to solicit that.
Okay. We have a few written reports on the agenda which are provided for information and a much monthly financial reports and the FOIA report. There was one FOIA in my ear, shortest FOIA report ever. Any questions on those reports? Okay. And then in terms of reports from board members, so we have one board committee report attached to Teaching and Learning Committee back in November. And I believe the HR Policy Committee bid yesterday. No meeting notes out yet. Any other reports from board members?
If I may just briefly, I represented our district at the delegate assembly at the IASB conference. We had a reported, in my report, the report that took place on Resolution Number Two, which was a resolution for armed teachers and staff, particularly for downstate districts that don't have the luxury of having officers, police officers, people nearby, and how that was defeated. That was the second time, the first time also delegate, the controversial resolution was to let the lobby's, the lobby's IASB be the general assembly to modify curriculum standard for science to allow local control, un, for the science, in essence, to allow districts to side on the one creation of part of the science curriculum. And that was a very controversial resolution. I approached the delegate assembly yesterday that was possible as our board governance session yesterday. I would like to pursue, unless there's some objections or whatever, approaching IASB leadership suggesting that they adopt a protocol that unless a resolution to direct the lobby to do something, that IASB lobby to do something doesn't pass by a two thirds of the floor, then it doesn't pass. If that Resolution Number Two passed by a slim majority, which it did, but passed, the lobby's in Springfield for the IASB with the opposing representatives in the seventies and said, the school districts in the state want to have our teachers and staff on. And that would be far from true because there was such opposition. So unless somebody has some objection, I'm going to try to approach the leadership, the IASB and my own to see if we can at least get them thinking, changing the protocol for not to lose issues.
So would that go directly to IASB or would that go through the two-page division of resolutions?
Right now, this would be a campaign, a singular campaign on my part. But I don't, if I get it, board members from other districts, you mentioned that idea to them and see if there was some feeling about supporting that approach. I could then look at what I expected.
I mean, I had gone, I think it was last summer, I participated in a focus group. And we have a one district, one vote policy in our state. And so our district with 20 schools and a neighboring district with one or two schools has the exact same vote. I think you're, what you're saying would help create more of an equity with that as well. So I'll for it.
Okay, any other board reports? All right, our topic for future discussion includes five-year financial projections, two future meeting announcements. On January 26th next year, we have a chat with the board at 9:00 at the SSC. And then on January 30th, a few days later, we have the Committee of the Whole meeting at 7:00 PM also at the SSC. And at that meeting is when we'll be doing the financial projections, which we refer to tonight. Are there any public comments or agenda? Nope. Okay, so now, the good one? See, Harold, now I have to read that comment here to the end. Am I going to be, am I required to read it? No, I'll just go ahead, Harold. So you want public comment on Harold, by Harold Longson, now agenda?
Good evening. My name is Harold Longson. I'm the district president. I just wanted to talk about the sports and sports fees. It's very interesting discussion. I do believe sports and these other programs and clubs do provide very good service to students. I personally have two kids in high school. And Rob has students and Chris and Jim had students in the high school and Jim had too. I mean, you see how many kids participate and it does provide an avenue for the kids to be active and participate and, you know, and be good people society. Now, when it comes to these fees and stuff, of course, I know in the past, I know Bill pulled together some information from other districts. And I noticed some districts have higher student fees, which come all sports, but they're very expensive, I think, you know, like $400, $500 per student. I just thought about this while you guys were discussing it. How about just charging all the high school kids like a $25, like a student, another student fee offsets some of these, like say fundraising portion of the cost of the 25,000 times about 2,000 students would be about $100,000 of money that could offset some of the fundraising costs. And this way, it won't be burdening, you know, these other athletes or club people for going out and try to fundraise like $300, $500 worth of funds. So that's my thought. And also, having kids in sports, I also noticed that sometimes there are some... also, having kids in sports, I also noticed that sometimes they're, some sports spend, you know, very frugal with their expenses, and other ones seem to spend a little more than they need, so that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Harold. So closed session, items are listed for possible action, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony at a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity, five ILCS, I don't know how to read this, Jim, 120 slash two, subparagraph C, subparagraph one, is that close enough? Do I have a motion and a second?
Salute.
Okay, so, Mrs. Erickson moved, Mr. Roman second, roll bubble.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes. All right, so I'll get to this here.